Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 6, 2020, meeting of the Lebanon City Council. I'll start with a pledge of allegiance, and then I will ask the city manager to lay down our ground rules for these remote meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, just as for all. Sean, would you like to lay the ground rules down?
Yes, this meeting is being conducted via Microsoft Teams, being conducted virtually. The council is not physically here, present due to the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic. It's unsafe for them to do so, it's unsafe for all the public to do so, so therefore, we are conducting it pursuant to emergency orders issued by the governor of the State of Hampshire, as well as provisions of our R.C. 91A. If the public is allowed to participate by phone or by logging into the live site, if you're participating by phone and you wish to comment during the public comment period or any other time that the mayor allows public comment, you simply dial *6. At that time, you'll be allowed into the meeting, and you can ask questions or make statements as appropriate, again, with the permission of the mayor.
Let me further do this, sir. Go ahead. Thank you very much. I'll start with a public forum announcement. As usual, any member of the public who desires to speak on any item, they do so when the item is taken up by the council, and will be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes, and we ask you to state your name, your ward of residence, if you live in Lebanon. We always open this up with items that are not on tonight's agenda, and so if there's anyone listening in from the public that has an item that is not on tonight's agenda that they would like to discuss, now would be the time, and we'll give you a minute or so to dial in if you're doing that.
Mayor McNamara, this is Karen. I have one question when you have a moment.
Certainly, go to it.
I was wondering if the city manager could... There's a sign on Elm Street, I believe, that says that the road, or part of the road, is going to be closed temporarily for May 11th and May 12th, I believe. I was wondering if you would be able to announce why that is taking place?
Okay. Oh, May 11th, May 12th? Oh, you're talking about Elm Street? Switch to the next. I ignored it. You do it. I don't know, hey, we're looking to it.
Corner of Green Street and Elm.
Yeah, we're doing some grater shim paving in there. That's probably what it's in reference to. He was waiting for some good days in which to do that, so that's going to happen on Kimball Street, so that's probably what that's in reference to. If it's anything else, we'll let you know.
Shim paving.
Yeah, right. Some of the words, they take it, it's not, you've probably seen the grater, the paving machines before, that lay out a consistent level of pavement. What this does is simply, our DPW crews will take a dump truck and a grater, and we will take the asphalt to even out the roadway. It's simply a temporary measure to get us by until we can do more permanent solutions to that situation there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone from the public calling in? Do they have anything? I just have one thing. I'd like to say, Councilor Winnie, I don't think he's on the line yet, unfortunately, but Councilor Winnie, is there? Oh, perfect. Councilor Winnie did a very nice thing for the city hall staff. He put together a barbecue, and it, believe it, it was a barbecue, on Monday, and he provided that to lunch for the staff. And it was first rate, what I would call professionally cooked barbecue. It was really, really good, staff really enjoyed it, and he provided a card to us that said on behalf of the city council, appreciate the work of the staff. So we really appreciate what he has done for us, and that's the sort of thing that helps build morale at a very difficult time. So I definitely, I wanted to recognize him for his efforts in that regard. Thank you very much, Councilor Winnie.
Well, thanks to the staff.
I didn't know that that was in your skill set, but the next time my birthday comes up, I'll let you know.
Fair enough. I need six hours' notice for ribs and 12 for pulled pork.
I will give you a month's notice, but thank you very much. Really appreciate it on behalf of the entire council. Very nice thing to do. Anyone else calling in or have anything?
I wanted to mention that at the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee meeting last night, a number of people commented on how impressed they were with the quality of the street sweeping that had been done, and they really appreciated that compared to some past years. And certainly, I noticed it, too. It was a good street sweeping contract.
Great. Thank you very much. Assistant Mayor Belo. Okay, sounds like we don't have any public comment tonight, so we will start with recognitions, and we have fun tonight. This is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. There was supposed to be a luncheon today at the Senior Citizens Center. It was planned a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, they could not hold it, so instead of being able to read that proclamation there, I'll read it here, and we'll present that to them. So the proclamation goes as follows. Proclamation, Older Americans Month, May 2020. Whereas the city of Lebanon includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences, and whereas the city of Lebanon is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society, and whereas the city of Lebanon recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all, and whereas the city of Lebanon can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, by involving older adults in community events and activities, and by providing opportunities for older adults to work, to volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Therefore, we now resolve the city of Lebanon proclaims May 2020 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential, valuable members of our community. Proclaim the sixth day of May in the year 2020. Timothy J. McNamara, Mayor of the City of Lebanon. Okay. Next item is acceptance of minutes from April 15, 2020. Would someone like to make a motion with regard to these minutes?
I'll make a motion. Council Prentice.
Council Prentice makes a motion.
Councilor Hill votes aye.
Bill seconds. Okay, we'll be doing a voice vote on everything here tonight. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Council Zook votes yes.
Council Belo votes yes.
Who am I missing?
Ehrlich Heistin votes aye.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Council Heistin. Council Heistin?
Votes aye.
Thank you, and Mayor McNamara votes aye. Minutes are passed. Okay, next item is appointments. We have several of them this evening. The first one, our council representatives, the planning board, one regular and one alternate. The city manager nominates Mr. Garland for reappointment to a three-year term to the... No, we did that last time, did we not? Yeah, this is Tom Myers, but you have to, what you have to do is you have to elect your own representative from the council to the planning board, if you choose to have an alternate as well. So I'll just explain that a little bit. Yes. Our charter actually requires that, and I think it was just discovered recently, so the mayor simply cannot appoint the representative of the planning board. It has to be elected by the council, so you have to actually take that step to do that. Okay? So why don't we start with those. Right now, our appointed representative is Councilor Winnie, I believe. Is that correct? Yes. And the alternate is Councilor Hill. So I will take a motion for nomination as the regular council representative to the planning board. Would someone like to make that motion?
Someone.
Who are you moving, Council Heistin?
Bruce Garland.
No, no, they're either, well, the two right now, Bruce Garland's on the council.
Oh, sorry, Jimney.
Doing the council reps. Right now, our appointed representative is Councilor Winnie, and the alternate is Councilor Hill.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
I nominate Councilor Winnie.
Do I have a second?
Seconded. Prentice seconds.
Prentice seconds. Council Heistin nominates Council Winnie as the council representative of the planning board. Council Prentice seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Whoops, we got a new roll call. Well, any of the nominations? Well, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie will abstain.
Council Winnie abstains. Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Council Heistin?
Yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, so we have eight in favor and one abstention. Okay, now, would someone like to make a nomination for the alternate council representative to the planning board?
I'd like to nominate Representative, Representative, Councilor Karen Leo-Hill for alternate city council representative to the planning board.
Thank you. Assistant Mayor Belo, and Council Brauner seconds that. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Council Heistin?
Aye.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. It's unanimous. Congratulations, folks. Okay, we also have an appointment tonight, a potential appointment, for Thomas Martz as a regular member of the planning board. That's a nomination made by the city manager, and so we will take a voice vote on that. Let me just say a couple of things. Tom Myers is presently an alternate on the planning board. His, most of his background comes from the academia, working for different colleges and universities. He's very, I would call him neutral. He looks at the, looks at things objectively. I think he'll be an excellent member to move on to the permanent position on the planning board. He fills the position, unfortunately, that Greg Schwartz vacated when he passed away, unfortunately for us, because he was a great volunteer for us. But I think Tom Myers will certainly do a good job to help to fill the shoes that Greg left, and serve us well. Thank you. This is a three-year term through May of 2023. Okay, so we'll do another voice vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Council Heistin?
Aye.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes. It's unanimous. unanimous. Thomas Martz is appointed as a regular member of the planning board for a three-year term. Next item is Economic Development Commission.
Actually, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question before you move on?
Absolutely.
So, I have a question, I guess, for the city manager, and it could be, you could send a note out afterward, but I guess I would like a little, I would appreciate a little guidance on the position of alternate member. The planning board has a quasi-judicial role. Part of the board, part of the board's role is to engage in fact-finding, and I guess there's, the question that I have is, I have been participating, I have been participating since that I do have to sit in as a voting member. I am aware of all of the questions and the issues and the applications that are coming in, because some of them are very complex and will be going on for extended periods of time, and so if I do have to sit in and vote, I want to make sure. There is a little bit of a question, I guess, about what my staff, if I, if I am there as the alternate, as a voting member, does that mean just a member of the public, which means that then after, after the public hearing is closed, I don't have the ability to speak, or am I still a member of the planning board who does have the ability to, of applicants? So I would appreciate some guidance from, from city staff. He said that, you know, he thought it was one way, but he wasn't entirely certain, so I just wanted to bring that to your, give that some thought, and send me some guidance on that, please.
Well, I think it might be good to just talk about real quick, because it applies to all the other boards as well. If we have alternate people who are suddenly covering for our council, who might not be able to attend. Again, this applies to all our boards. In particular, the planning board, those positions are statutory. It has statutory alternates. Those are the alternate that, that fit within its definition. There's no such thing as an alternate council member. Now, you have appointed one tonight, which is a smart move, so you've got someone who can cover if the primary council is not available. So as you stated earlier, you have no authority, no, no position on the planning board, only if you are replacing the city councillor in that person's particular seat, so you're not like the other alternates to the planning board. So when the planning board seats itself, you would not be sitting up there with the rest of them and try to further clarify that. You would be out with the general public, certainly listening to what's going on, so you are up to speed, so when you, when you would have to take over, you would know what's going on. So that, that's the only time that you would be treated differently than the rest of the public, is when you're actually in that seat covering for, in this case, Councilor Winnie. Otherwise, you would be like the rest of us. And I do the same thing when I go there. I sit in the crowd like everybody else and raise my hand as a member of the public to comment, and then they let me comment a few times I've done it. So we're in the same position.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for asking the question. So the next position we have to act on is a regular member of the Economic Development Commission. We're looking at Kevin Purcell here. He was interviewed by Councilor Hill. Councilor Hill, would you like to make the nomination and then speak to it?
Yes, I would. I'd like to nominate Kevin Purcell for regular member to the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, and would someone like to second that?
Second, Prentice.
Council Prentice seconds. Yes, please speak to your nomination.
Thank you. The Economic Development Commission is the successor committee to what was the Vitality Exchange Commission, which was about seven or eight years ago by former city manager Greg Lewis. Kevin is a member of the Economic Vitality Exchange Commission, and he's been a very dedicated, consistent member. He brings a really positive as a, as a developer, as a large landowner. He, but he also has a really great, just a really great knowledge of the economy of the Upper Valley and the pressures on landlords and property owners, and also the kinds of things that are causing concern for businesses who are trying to retain employees, things like that. So he's just, has been a really valuable member of the economic community, and I think he'll be a wonderful member of, of the Economic Development Commission. He's particularly making sure that we're focused on taking action as opposed to simply talking things to death. So he's a good, he's good at pushing to take, you know, to take ideas and to actually put them into action.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions with regard to Mr. Purcell's nomination? Okay, hearing none will take a voice vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Council Heistin?
Ehrlich Heistin votes aye.
Thank you, and Mayor McNamara votes yes. So Kevin Purcell is appointed as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term starting this month through May of 2022. The last appointments we have for tonight were two appointments as alternate members of the Library Board of Trustees. One of those applicants has withdrawn their application, so we will only be voting on one tonight, and that is Corinne Erskine. And I don't have here that she was interviewed, because I don't have a name. Did anyone on the council interview Ms. Erskine?
This is Councilor Zook. I was assigned to interview her, and we had a conversation about it, and I am happy to nominate her, but I didn't, I apologize, I totally dropped the ball on filling out the form, but I think she would be an excellent addition to the, to the trustees.
So you would make that appointment of Ms. Erskine as an alternate member of the Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term through 2021?
Yes.
Two. Okay, would someone like to second that?
Ehrlich will second.
Ehrlich Heistin seconds. We'll take a voice vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Council Belo?
Yes.
Assistant, Council Heistin?
Heistin votes aye.
And McNamara votes aye, so Ms. Erskine is appointed as an alternate member of the Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term. Okay, that will move us on to public hearing items. Let me turn to the appropriate page here. While you're doing that, Mr. Mayor, there were a couple of folks who called in, and we're hearing some background noise, so what I did is I muted you. For those of you who have called in, members of the public by the, by phone, if you wish to speak when the mayor allows for public comment, just dial *6 on your phone, and that will mute, that will mute your phone and allow you to speak to us. So *6, and that'll allow you to do that, because I have muted you for, temporarily, until he opens up for public comment. Thank you very much. Okay, public hearing items. The first one, 7A, is Amendment to Ordinance Number 18, Salary Plan, Article III, Bargaining Unit Employees, Lebanon Professional Administrative, Salaried Employees, La Paz, to include the position of Assistant City Engineer. And this is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend Ordinance Number 18, Salary Plan, Article III, Bargaining Unit Employees, for the purposes of including the position of Assistant City Engineer in the La Paz Salary Plan Pay Schedule. We scheduled this public hearing on April 1, 2020, and it was appropriately noted in the values on the 25th of April, and according to the city code and the state law. So would the staff like to make that presentation on this? Yes, HR Director Leskovich would like to comment on that.
Yes, good evening, and hopefully you can hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Gloria Leskovich, Human Resources Director. Good evening, Mayor McNamara and city council members. I'm here tonight to request a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan for Article III Bargaining Unit Employees for the purpose of including the position of Assistant City Engineer in the Lebanon Professional Administrative and Salaried Employee Salary Plan Pay Schedule. To give you a little bit of background, this position currently is a funded position in the AFSMI Union Scales or Classification Study. The engineer technician is funded in 2020 under the Department of Public Works, and this position evolved as the functions expanded to include duties associated with the city's sewer capacity modeling and asset management programs, and due to the expansion of the professional and technical changes of the position, the position was evaluated and determined that the community of interest also changed from being an AFSMI position to a Lebanon Professional Administrative Salaried Employee La Paz position. And this is, was graded, and is graded as a grade nine in that classification scale, and it's, we're asking and requesting this to be retitled to the Assistant City Engineer position.
Thank you very much, Gloria. This is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments by the public with regard to this proposal? Just remember, for those of you, there's a couple of you who I have already muted, if you're on the phone, just dial *6, and that will allow you to participate in the discussion. Okay, I'm hearing no public comment on this particular item, and hearing none, I will close the public.
Whoa, 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 it appears as though one of the phone numbers was trying to speak. I mean, the 448-6809 was sort of pulsating like it does when somebody's trying to speak, so maybe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did not mean to push anything to pulsate.
Okay, you're fine. You're fine. Thank you. Do you have a comment on this particular item?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Sorry?
No, good, it's too early, sorry. I was gonna make a motion.
Well, we'll close the public hearing, so you certainly can make a motion. Please do it.
Okay. Move that the Lebanon City Council acknowledges the third of three presentations to amend Ordinance Number 18, Article III Bargaining Unit Employees, Lebanon Professional Administrative, Salaried Employees, La Paz, to include the position of Assistant City Engineer, grade nine. Further, do I read the resolution as well, or just?
Yes, please.
Okay. Resolution, for the purpose of amending Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan. Hold on, I gotta scroll down here, guys.
That's okay.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lebanon City Council amends Ordinance Number 18, Article III Bargaining Unit Employees, Lebanon Professional Administrative, Salaried Employees, La Paz, to include the position of Assistant City Engineer, grade nine.
And would you record the table below that that's shown in the council packet?
Right, as referenced in the, the table in the city council packet of this date.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for that motion?
Prentice seconds.
Council Prentice seconds. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? We'll take a voice vote. Council Prentice?
Yes.
Council Hill?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Yes.
Council Brauner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Council Heistin?
Aye, sorry, I muted myself. Forgot it.
That's all right. Council Heistin votes yes. Mayor McNamara votes yes. This passes unanimously. Okay, our second, our second public hearing for this evening relates to tax exemption for electric energy storage systems. Would the staff like to make a presentation on this? Rick Vincent came on, which he is, yeah, I'm gonna have him do that. I'm trying to help a couple of folks get into the system here, so go ahead. help a couple of folks get into this system here, so go ahead, Rick.
Okay, thank you. So as a, to begin with, I'll give you some background. In March of 2013, the city council passed a resolution to adopt the provisions of RSA 7262, which is the exemption for solar energy systems. And those systems are defined in RSA 7261. In October of '29, the state legislature passed House Bill 464, which includes electrical energy storage systems under RSA 7261 and 7262. So if the city council wishes to adopt the exemption for the electrical energy storage systems, they would need to adopt RSA 7285, and then re-adopt RSA 7262. Now RSA 7285, we'll get back to that, reads, "A city or town may adopt an exemption under RSA 7227A from the assessed value for property tax purposes for persons owning real property which is equipped with an electrical energy storage system." So you would need to adopt 7285 first, and then re-adopt RSA 7262 in order to exempt the electrical energy storage systems.
Thank you, Rick. So for those who might not be familiar with these types of systems, and Council Belo will elucidate if necessary, if I'm unclear, these are the batteries that are frequently installed to take advantage of, or sometimes installed to take advantage of off-peak energy purposes. We have a pilot program with the city now where these batteries are being provided at a nominal charge by the utility, Liberty Utilities, to enable them to have folks store off-peak energy in their homes, and which also gives you the benefit of being able to have some power when the power, when the power goes out. They're also sometimes used in conjunction with storage of energy from solar systems. Would you like to add anything to that, Assistant Mayor Belo?
I would, I would, and I'd like to share my screen too, so I'm gonna try to do that.
Okay.
And the first thing I have shown up here is that definition of electric energy storage systems. And I just wanted to point out that it's a little bit broader than just a battery. It's really any means of storing electrical energy. It could be thermal, electrical, chemical, mechanical, for use at a later time, and it could be in the form of either electricity or thermal energy that overall can be used to reduce peak loads, compensate for variability in renewable energy production, or provide other grid services. But there's a broad definition. I'd also like to show one other thing here. This, this, I actually worked on, not, I worked on the bill that created this exemption on behalf of the city, and this refers to a different bill, which is where this language originated, but it was copied over into the other bill. And part of the concern about solar and battery storage is that they're capital-intensive ways of dealing with electricity that are, don't per se necessarily have a fuel cost, they're just storing, well, with storage, you're storing it for use at a different time when it might be more useful. And part of the issue is that when you look at the property tax burden relative to what they displace, which on the margin in New England is mostly natural gas combined cycle, this is sort of a, somewhat simplified, but reasonably accurate way of comparing what the property tax burden might be per kilowatt hour produced. And because of the limitation to any kind of storage system, to how, you know, frequently it can be used, you know, typically on a daily basis, and the fact that they're capital-intensive, the property tax burden could make it so that they're not economical, even though they make sense in the greater scheme of things. And so for, in this illustration, for a brand-new battery storage system like what Liberty's putting in as part of the pilot in Lebanon, the tax burden per kilowatt hour produced would be almost 10 times that for natural gas combined cycle, which, which is more fuel, it uses more fuel, which we don't tax, than capital-intensive property value. But that's partially an explanation in, in part of what helps support the legislature and the governor deciding to enact this into law, because we want to promote storage for a variety of public policy reasons, but the tax burden itself might make it difficult. And this kind of came home, because on behalf of the city, again, I was involved in helping negotiate in Liberty's battery pilot when they proposed it to the PUC, and one of the issues there was that going forward, they have to prove that this is, you know, net cost-benefit, the benefit exceeds the cost. And when they projected for tax value alone could play a critical role in whether this proves to be cost-effective or not. So by the city going ahead and adopting this local option to exempt for local taxes, meaning city, school district, and county taxes, but not the statewide property tax, this will help make storage more viable, and it's sort of a very important part of transition to a more sustainable future, and can help break down other grid costs by shifting load off peaks, we don't have to build more capacity just for a few hours. But that's a little more background.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing on this item, which is electric energy storage systems, proposed property tax exemption. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing now I'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion, but before you do, I note that the way the motion is worded in the, in the packet for this evening, it says it shall take effect on April 1st, 2020. Should this be, is retroactive to April 1st, 2020? Yes, to the couple of that time period, because that's when we assess the tax, what's on the ground April 1st. So rather than saying shall take effect on April 1st, shall be retroactive to April 1st. And Council Brauner, you want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, my, Council Winnie, I just wanted to jump in quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just got an email. I just got an email that some people are having some difficulty getting in, they're getting a link to the wrong site.
Yeah, that's what we're telling everybody, I've been dealing with these, they've been coming in to call in on the phone number, grab a difficulty logging in.
Yep. That's fine, and I saw everybody got it, but wasn't sure if we'd seen it yet.
I, well, I just forwarded that to the manager as well, I, but can we, can we get the right link, can we get the right link out so that people can watch as well?
At this point, once we've started the live meeting, no, that's why I suggested people call on the phone.
Just a technical note and aside, we had this problem the other night when the link, somehow the link sent to the committee members was different than the link on the city website, and so half the group was in one meeting and half was in the other meeting till we figured it out, and got a quorum in one meeting. It's the glitch in this meeting stuff. Tough one.
Well, to those in the audience, I'm sorry about that, we're trying to correct it, but it probably is not correctable, and if you could please call in with the comments, that would be the best now, best we could do tonight. Seeing no one calling in on this item, I will close the public hearing. Councilors, are there any questions on this, or would you just like to have Council Brauner make his motion? Why don't you go ahead and make a motion, Council Brauner?
Be it hereby resolved that the city of Lebanon hereby adopts the provision of New Hampshire RSA 72 call 85, exemption for electric energy storage systems in an amount equal to any increase in incremental assessed value of the entire property attributable to the qualifying electrical energy storage system. Be it further resolved that the city of Lebanon hereby re-adopt the provisions of NH RSA 7262 exemptions for solar energy systems as defined in RSA 7261, which expand the definition of solar energy systems to those which utilize solar energy to produce electricity for building, and includes all photovoltaics, inverters, and storage, and exempts these components from the assessed value of the property or property tax purposes. This resolution shall be retroactive to April 1st, 2020, and take effect on that date.
Thank you, Council Brauner. Is there a second to this motion?
Councilor Hill will second.
Council Hill seconds, thank you very much. Any further discussion, councilors?
Council Sykes has a comment.
Yes, Council Sykes, please.
I'm not positive, but I believe that, my understanding is that I've been selected to participate in this battery program, so it's my intention to abstain because it might be a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll hold a voice vote then. Council Prentice.
Yes, Prentice votes yes.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Sykes abstains. Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook.
Yes.
Council Brauner.
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Belo votes yes.
Council Heistin.
Heistin votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, and the vote is eight in favor with one abstention. Motion passes. Okay. That takes care of our public hearing items for this evening. We have no old business, so we'll move on to the new business items, of which there are several. The first is a request for a street name change, Beechwood Lane and Pine Tree Lane in West Lebanon, both are private roads, to a single road name Village Lane. Would staff like to make any? Yes, there's some confusion about, because the road rats are on, these are private roads, they're not city-owned roads, and there's a lot of confusion as to, because it goes in a couple of different directions. You would think that if you took a left or a right, that would be a different street, so they're trying to clarify that. This is Twin Pines Housing, they've asked for these name changes, the names that they have recommended are, do not conflict with any of the street names that we have, it's been reviewed by our public safety folks, and they are concurrence of each appropriate. The council has the statutory authority to place the names on all streets in the city, so therefore it's on you to act on this if you so choose to, and we recommend that you do. Again, these names are the recommendation of Twin Pines Housing. Okay, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes, Council Brauner.
Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby rename High Tree Lane and Beechwood Lane to Village Lane.
Go here, second.
Council Winnie will second.
Council Winnie seconds. Any further discussion? We'll take a voice vote. Council Prentice.
Yes.
Council Hill.
Yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes says yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook.
Yes.
Council Brauner.
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Yes.
Council Heistin.
Hearing Heistin votes aye.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes. Vote is nine to nothing. This passes, the road is renamed Village Lane. Okay, second item under new business is the presentation of the first reading and setting a public hearing for June 3rd, 2020. This is an amendment to Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan, Article 2, Non-Affiliated Employees, to include the positions of Technical Advisor 1 and 2, and General Intern 1 and 2. Gloria, would you like to speak to this? Gloria Leskowitz? Anyway, these two positions are, we don't have any such position, Technical Advisor 1 or 2, we don't have General Intern 1 or 2. As you remember, all positions within the city must be approved by the council. We have had interns before, we've had people fill in similar functions, but you actually have to authorize those positions. So we're not actually creating new positions, salary positions in the city, but when we do have people fill these slots, as we have in the past, you have to have created the position in the first place to do that. And what this simply does is it authorizes by, like, by ordinance, in this particular case, Ordinance 18 allows us to do that. Again, we've had interns before, and this allows us two different grades of interns at two different salary ranges, if they're to be paid, some unpaid, of course. The Technical Advisor, we have, it's an even time-to-time to do that, we have several on board right now. Bruce Temple, as you know, was working with City Hall, his job won't last as long as we do the renovation of that project. As we told you, we did the budget last year, he's only funding till the end of that, and when that goes away, his position goes away, so he's one of those technical advisors. We've had several working in findings, we have one right now assisting us, they're for temporary periods of time generally. And Sandy Allen, she leaves us for retirement here soon, will, she'll be available to us if Chris agrees to reach out to her and ask questions, so she'd be a technical advisor to assist us at that particular time, or if we actually need to come in and do something to help us with something, if she has the institutional knowledge. So that's what this essence does, and again, we have two different positions to allow us for two different salary grades, one at the lower range, one at the upper range. Very good. Councilors, any questions for the city manager on these two proposed intern positions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Council Sykes.
I understand this is only setting the public hearing, but will there be a more detailed job description for these that we can look at before we vote on these positions?
Have you seen the job descriptions we have right now? Is that what you're asking about, the ones that exist?
Well, there's, no, I was asking specifically about the, these new, well, the ones, the Technical Advisor, for instance, too. I didn't notice it in the packet, but maybe I just missed it.
Because they are general in nature, because they can be used in any department, so that's how they were written, to be very general, if that's what you're asking about, because some are obviously far more detailed, right, as you say before, Council Sykes. But these are, both of these are very general, so they can be used in any department in the city, so we're not creating 10 different intern positions and 10 different Technical Advisor positions, that's the concept of it.
So, fair enough, but, I mean, for any good evaluation of what the work that a person is doing, having a job description would be part of that evaluation, so I just wondered what that might be.
Right, so if you're not seeing it in your packet, we can provide that to you.
All right, I'd appreciate it, it could be it's right in front of my face, but I just don't see it.
We can just email it, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Independent.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion on this? Now, again, this is just acknowledging the first of three presentations.
Sure, this is Karen, Karen Leo-Hill, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Move that the Lebanon City Council acknowledges the first of three presentations to amend Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan, Article 2, by adding the positions of Technical Advisor 1, Grade 11, Technical Advisor 2, Grade 16, General Intern 2, Grade 1, and the seasonal temporary position of General Intern 1 to the non-affiliated compensation and classification schedules, as shown on the table in the Lebanon City Council Agenda Packet of May 6, 2020. A further move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend Ordinance Number 18 Salary Plan, Article 2, Non-Affiliated Employees, by adding the positions of Technical Advisor 1, Grade 11, Technical Advisor 2, Grade 16, General Intern 2, Grade 1, and a seasonal temporary position of General Intern 1 to the non-affiliated compensation and classification schedules.
Thank you. Someone like to second that?
Prentice seconds.
Yes, Council Prentice seconds. Any further discussion? We will call a voice vote. Council Prentice.
Prentice, yes.
Yes, Council Hill.
Hill, yeah.
Council Sykes?
Sykes, yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zoh? Council Zoh?
Unmute fail, yes.
All right. Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Council Heistin?
Heistin votes yes.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Oh, Council Bronner, terribly sorry, Council Bronner. Council Bronner votes yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item under new business is the creation of a task force regarding fair and impartial policing. So let me read the background in the packet and then speak to this a little bit, uh, because this is, this is my initiative. So on March 10th, 2020, the voters of Lebanon passed a welcoming Lebanon ordinance with the purpose and intent to establish the city's procedures concerning immigration status and enforcement of federal civil immigration laws. A legal review proposed ordinance provided concerns with some of the provisions and that they may be construed as contrary to either federal or state law. During the review of the ordinance at the January 22nd, 2020, public hearing, there was discussion about the council's desire to work with members of the community, correct language within the ordinance that both preserves its intent and produces a lawfully compliant regulation, in this case, an ordinance. In order to achieve this, it is suggested a task force be established. It includes members of the council, members of the welcoming Lebanon Petition Committee, and members of the general public. And we've attached a task force request form, it's our standard form, uh, to the council package. So, my thought was that, in the many, many discussions we've had on this over a number of months, um, including discussions with the petitioners and other interested parties, that there was some acknowledgement even prior to the passage of the resolution, that the ordinance as proposed was somewhat generic and had at least some potential and possibly some real, um, legal issues associated with it, particularly provision number six, which related to recording of, um, of federal immigration presence in the city. And also with regard to keeping track of data on ethnicity, race, and other factors, which are actually important to our current fair and impartial policing policy that we have. So, um, I felt like it made sense to appoint a task force of city residents, of city councilors, and of representatives of the petitioners, all of whom would be residents of the City of Lebanon, to get together over the next several months and to discuss this, and hopefully come up with some consensus recommendations that could then be presented to the council, hopefully sometime in late September or early October, for us to consider and potentially act upon. Um, I recognize that consensus is not always possible, although I hope, in this case, with a group of very reasonable citizens, it is, um, that we may be in a position where there are majority and minority opinions. And if that's the case, that's fine, too. That's also good information for the council to have. So what I'm asking the council to do tonight is to appoint this task force. I will tell you in advance that if the task force is in fact, uh, created, uh, it is my intention to appoint the following individuals to it. And I've had a number of discussions over the last two or three weeks now with representatives of the petitioners with regard to, um, who would be on this, uh, particular task force. So, there would be two city councilors, Councilors Hill and Councilors Prentice. I would ask Council Hill to chair the task force, and Council Prentice to be the vice-chair of the task force. The petitioners have come up with two of their members that they would like to be, uh, their representatives to the task force, and that is Kathleen Beckett and Devin Wilkie. And then the three residents that I want to appoint to this task force are Kesleyum Casey is his nickname, Montas, uh, who is, lives up on Hardy Hill, Barry Schuster, uh, well-known attorney in the city, who resides on Elm Street, downtown Lebanon here, and Reverend Diane Root, uh, who resides in West Lebanon. Um, those are the seven that I would like to see on this task force. Um, I would be happy to entertain any questions from the council as to my proposal. Okay.
Um, Councilor Belo here?
Yes, Council Belo.
Um, I have a question. Um, one of the proposed, the proposed tasks are to, um, propose amendments which would make it compliant, um, with federal, state laws, rules, and regulations. I also felt that there was a need, um, to have just more clarity i- in that regard, um, with some of the issues that had come up, and I'll, and I'll be specific about one. In, in one of the provisions, it, it says, uh, essentially all city employees and officials should not ask about, um, anybody's citizenship status. And I pointed out, um, during the council deliberations of this, that New Hampshire law, uh, requires, um, people, uh, when they're registering to vote, to attest that they are U.S. citizens. And furthermore, if there, if it's, um, same-day registration, for instance, um, the law seems to provide that election officials, um, ask for documents that might indicate citizenship status. Um, and furthermore, there's a process by which somebody can challenge a voter registration and file a document in which they challenge someone's citizenship. They, they can state that that's the reason they're challenging, or they're not a resident. Um, so the, the reasons I brought those up is because I think the, the attorney for the city and the city clerk didn't feel that the, technically, the way the ordinance was written necessarily put it, uh, people in violation of that state law, but I felt like it wasn't really clear, um, and that it would be better just to be clear, because everybody said at the hearing that the intent was, oh, the intent is not to put city, um, election officials in violation of the state election laws. So I would just like the understanding that the task maybe includes going beyond technical compliance, but also clarity as to intent. Um, be- because I think there was a discussion at the public hearing, um, about the ordinance, uh, that, 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 we seem to have common ground on the intent, um, and, and a willingness by all parties to be clear about the intent. So I, I just wanted to say that I think it's, it's both the goal of making it legally compliant, but also clear about what the intent is and what, uh, city, um, officials, uh, whether, um, elected or employees, uh, should do in, in, in regard to the subject matter of the ordinance.
So I think those are exactly the kind of questions that I hope will come out in the context of the task force discussions, um, and that all of those would be vetted and discussed and hopefully resolved in the context of the ordinance.
Mayor McNamara, this is Karen.
Yes, Council Hill.
Thank you. Um, and I, I thank you for bringing this forward and the thoughtful approach that you've taken to, um, putting together a task force. This was something that, um, did come up when we had the meeting, uh, and the public hearing at Seminary Hill, and I think there was, um, a good faith on the part of slurs and, uh, members of the public, particularly those who had participated in the petition initiative, um, to try to work to, to, they indicated interest in working together, um, after the March vote, uh, to try and address some of the areas that might need clarification, some of the areas unintended consequences, um, and to make sure that it was an enforceable ordinance at the time that it, that it becomes, uh, that it becomes active in January. Um, I, so I thank you very much for, um, for asking me to participate in this, and I certainly believe in the deliberative process. I know that when, and the people would come to the table, um, and they share a con- dedication and commitment um, to, to shared values, that they can truly hash out the issues and come to agreement. So I'm very optimistic that we will, over the course of the next six months, if this, uh, is passed this evening, or rather, four, four months, I think, um, we will be able to address a lot of the questions that have come up and, um, work together with our, 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 um, to find solutions to, um, some of the, some of the areas where there may be, um, where there may be, be some discrepancies at that, at this point. So I would look forward to working with, um, all of the folks that you have identified and the, the public at large, because of course, meetings of a task force are not only open to the, the members of the task force, the public as well, and I would envision that this could be a very open, a very transparent, and a very, um, engaging process that would welcome many diverse, uh, voices and would, um, would be truly collaborative. So, um, I thank you, and I am super moving forward with this. My one comment is that it is, uh, I think you've titled it "The Task Force for Fair and Impartial Policing." I know that's one of the major issues, but it wasn't the only issue of the welcoming Lebanon ordinance, but I, I might, I think that you will allow the task force to interpret that, uh, a little more broadly, and we would not simply be addressing policing issues that we would, we would be addressing the, uh, initiative in a, in a, in a broad sense of the term, so not just the fair and impartial ordinance, but, uh, the entire ordinance that was passed by the voters.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up. That's absolutely clear, and that point was also brought up to me, um, this afternoon by another person. Uh, it's certainly not my intent to restrict this only to the police department. Uh, there were certainly parts of the resolution that applied to other organizations, uh, within the city government outside the police department. Um, I named it that not for that reason, but because that was, uh, we do have a fair and impartial policing policy within our police department, and I know that it at least in one, if not more, of the other towns that have adopted this, that's how they, they titled it, but that is not my intent to restrict it just to police, but to the city, uh, government at large, so thanks for bringing that up. And also for your mention of this being a very public and transparent process, um, this is a, this is a very significant issue, um, for the city writ large, um, you know, uh, well over 2,000 folks voted on this. It passed by a majority. Uh, there are strong feelings on both sides, but it did in fact pass by a majority, and so I think that it's incumbent upon all of us now as citizens of the City of Lebanon to work together, um, to, to make this happen in a way that works, that works for the city, that's legal and that is, can affect, be effectively implemented, because the last thing any of us want is something that can be implemented. So, um, any other counselor comments or questions on this? Okay, so, um, this is not a public hearing, um, but I will take a couple of minutes, if necessary, and entertain any questions that folks might have out there with regard to the proposal. Just a reminder, if you're calling in by phone, the dot star six, that will unmute your phone to allow you to speak.
This is Al Patterson, Ward 3. I'm waiting to speak when I'm permitted.
Yes, certainly. Please go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Okay, um, I'm Al Patterson, Ward 3. Um, I, I went to the meetings on this welcoming ordinance, and, um, and I, and I, although it passed, I, I, I don't, it didn't pass by a lot. I think it was a couple hundred votes, and I have some concerns. Um, obviously with number six and reporting and the data information, which is critical to the, um, fair and impartial policing for the police department and, and keeping data, um, I have concerns about the notification, which is clearly in violation. You can't know, you can't, I mean, they wanted the notification to be given in, in the event of border patrols in the area. I think that places the, um, police and the police officers in jeopardy when you, when you place that requirement on them. I think there was some indication in there in regards to, um, any city official doing that. Um, so that is something that'll need to be addressed. Secondly, um, I'm curious as to how you developed your criteria for the task force. I see no diversity whatsoever on there. You've got, um, appointed people who are obviously in, in favor of it, and I'm not opposed to this completely. I'm opposed to it the way it's written, but jeopardizes our city, and a lot of people may not, um, but there's a chance of, uh, you know, federal fundings being, um, withdrawn and that, that we write this wrong or something happens. So, um, I guess the task force, to me, seems very stacked, and, and I don't think that, you know, if we're talking about a, um, a situation where, um, certainly somebody, some, um, knowledge on what it's like to live in this community and being a minority would be of the benefit, um, so, and I don't see anybody sitting on the task force that represents that whatsoever. And, um, you know, I, I see that as a huge problem, so. And I, and I, as you know, I emailed you, Mr. Mayor, several times, um, twice, I guess, and we've talked about this, and, um, and I've been very active in the community and talking about this, um, issue, and it is a hot-button issue that, that needs to be resolved so that both sides will be happy, and people in Lebanon don't feel like we're being put on the back burner, and people who here are not here legally will be put before us, which is exactly what this will do, um, if we tie the hands with the police department. Um, I, I value, right, and I, and I think that it's important to be fair and equal to everybody, but I, I don't, that, that you certainly didn't do that with this task force. You didn't represent our community, and you certainly didn't represent what I think is needed to, um, get some legitimate input into the, the situation.
I, I, I beg to differ with you there. Um, I did work hard to balance this task force. I think this is a balanced group of folks. I certainly did not try to, excuse me, let me finish, please. Um, I certainly did not try to weigh it on one side or the other. I tried to pick a group of people who, obviously, we had to have representatives of petitioners on there. That was important, and, and they certainly, um, have their role to fill, but I felt that by having two councilors who have very balanced views on this, uh, on there was extremely important, as a council will ultimately have to take some action on this. And then I did pick three, um, three, uh, members of the community who may not represent complete racial diversity, but they do represent, um, gender diversity, ethnic diversity in the community, and most importantly, I think, we're able to have a very balanced view. So I made the choices I made. Um, I'm able to make those as mayor. Uh, I hope I didn't make a mistake. I don't think I did. I would tell you that this is a very public process. You certainly, or any folks who you want to come and participate in a meeting, are more than welcome to participate as members of the public, and I'm sure your views would be, would be listened to and welcomed.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think that in the diversity category, we, you're lucky to hit the, the one on the scale, the one to ten with that, because, um, you're, you're asking people to judge and speak of things that, you know, they, they don't live, they don't understand, they don't know. I do. I've been here. I've lived it on both sides, so to that, I, I respectfully disagree with you there. Um, but I will say that, uh, you know, your, your council members, from what I've seen, um, clearly are in favor of this, so I don't see that, that they're gonna, um, you know, be all that, uh, neutral and, and trying to come to a fair conclusion. One council member referred to this at the meeting, that was Councilor Hill, that is my city, and, and a, and a, and this is not any one councilor's city. This is all of our cities collectively. We, we vote, we elect people. Um, as you know, when I ran, I didn't lose by much, so I think that, uh, when, when we, when we, the, the terminology that we use and our verbiage we use can, can, can lead people to... can, can, can lead people to feel like some people think they are the, the king on the hill, and, and I did.
I know we cut you off, but I, I, I get where you're coming from, I understand what you're saying. Um, and again, uh, mayor's prerogative on this, so I picked the folks I picked. I feel good about my choices, and again, I welcome you to participate in the process however you'd like, so.
No, I appreciate your, yeah, no, I, I, I hear you, I just, you know, obviously it seems a little stacked, and I think it's, it was done wrong, so with all due respect, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, please, very quickly? And this really pertains to establishment of the task force itself, not where they may or may not go. So if you have an issue about, or a question about establishment of the task force, that's what your comment should pertain to. Okay. Harry Nunn, um, councillors, would someone like to make a motion on this? Yes, councillor Bronner would like to make a motion.
Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby establishes fair and impartial policing task force. A task force created to study and propose amendments to the welcoming Lebanon ordinance as approved by others on March 10th, 2020. Members of the task force will be appointed by the mayor, and we'll be comprised of the following. Two city councillors, two members of the welcoming Lebanon Petition Committee, who are also Lebanon residents, and three members of the general public.
Do you have a second on that motion? Councillor Heistit, do you second?
I second.
Motion was made and seconded, is there any further discussion in the council? We'll call a voice vote, councillor Prentice?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Sykes?
Yes.
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Yes.
Councillor Bronner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Councillor Heistit?
Erling Heistit votes aye.
Mayor McNamara votes yes, vote is unanimous in favor of the motion. I will now announce formally that the city council representatives to this task force will be councillor Hill, who will serve as chair, and councillor Prentice, who will serve as vice chair. And I will note that neither of them volunteered for this, I asked both of them to do this. Uh, members of the welcoming Lebanon Petition Committee, Kathleen Beckett and Devon Wilkie, and members of the general public, Casey Montas, Barry Schuster, and Diane Root. So um councillor Hill, I'll ask you to as quickly as you can um start the meetings. I understand that they will need to be virtual for at least a while, and I'll, I know the staff will assist you in um putting that together. Um, we will have our city attorney available as a technical um representative to the, to the task force, and any other assistance you may require from the staff. So thank you very much, councillors, I look forward to this being a very productive discussion over the next few months, and hopefully there will be some recommendations coming back to the council in late September, early October. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda or new business is discussion and setting a public hearing for May 20th, 2020. This is ordinance number 2020 dash 06, to amend city code chapter 136 Sewer Service Article 10, Collection and Abatement Section 136 dash 80, Abatement. Uh, staff, would you like to make a presentation on this? Yes, the purpose of this, uh, in, in the present water uh order, uh code in the city, uh, there are provisions that allow the city manager to enter into uh payment agreements with people, payment plans. That provision does not exist in sewer ordinance, and I think it's appropriate that I have that ability to do that, so I can enter into those agreements with folks, especially under the, the economic situation that we face. Because right now I have no ability to do that, if someone can't pay their sewer bill, then it ramps up to the interest rates, and there's basically nothing I can do about that. This would allow me to help them spread out those payments like I can with the, the water bills for those who may need it after they apply to do so. So that relieves what, so the, the language we're adding mimics the exact language we have in the water code, do the same thing. So we're really just um filling a hole here that has been there for a while, that we always have this ability underwater, we just haven't had the ability under sewer. Right, I never had, you know, the city manager was having delegated that authority to do that, okay? So that, that's an important uh piece to bring, there is no language about abatements by anybody. Presumably, if the council wanted to do that on their own, they could. I don't know if you want to do that, um, but it makes sense, obviously, for me to do that. If, if they don't agree with my, whatever, the conclusion I draw on the payment plan, they can appeal that to you. Councillors, any questions on this, it seems really straightforward? Yes, councillor Belo?
Um, I'll move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, May 20, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020 dash 06, to amend the code of the city of Lebanon, Chapter 136 Sewer Service, Article 10, Collection and Abatement, Section 136 dash 80, Abatement.
Someone like to second that motion? Councillor Bronner seconds? Any further discussion? We'll call a voice vote, councillor Prentice?
Oops, I was unmuted, yes, Prentice, yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Sykes?
Councillor Sykes says yes.
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Yes.
Councillor Bronner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Councillor Heistit?
Erling Heistit votes yes.
Mayor McNamara votes yes, motion passes. The next item we have is discussion and setting public hearing, a public hearing, for June 3rd, 2020, ordinance number 2020 dash 07, to repeal and replace city code chapter 124, public stormwater system. Again, Sean? This does a couple of things, this is more houseclean than anything else. This allows us to mimic the uh, the, the change we made to the water code, as well as the sewer code, to uh bring those in, to modernize those, and it also allows us to have code regulations that are compliant with MS4 communities. MS4 is uh, uh, the storm system requirements, the EPA has placed on 60 of the communities in the southern part of the state. Eventually that will get to us, but we are not, we don't have to comply with that at this point. However, the, the closer we can get to that, the better off we're going to be when that day does come. And this allows us, I'll give you an example, we had a situation where we had a business property owner that wanted to tie in the city's uh stormwater system, and it was quite the ordeal to do that, but there wasn't a process, there wasn't an ordinance that spell how to do that. And now there'll be a permit application that they would fill, and hopefully this will streamline that, streamline that, make it a lot easier to then to get that connection in the system. So that's one of the, the big reasons for doing this as well. Great, councillors, any questions of the city manager on this proposal? Harry Nunn, I'd ask for a motion? Someone like to make a motion, yes, councillor Sykes?
Um, move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020 dash 07, to repeal and replace city code chapter 124, use of public stormwater system.
Do you have a second on that?
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Prentice seconds? Any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a voice vote, councillor Prentice?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Sykes?
Councillor Sykes votes yes.
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Councillor Zook votes yes.
Councillor Bronner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Councillor Heistit?
Erling Heistit votes aye.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes, the motion passes. Okay, uh, next item is F. This is discussion and setting a public hearing again for June 3rd, 2020, ordinance 2020 dash 08, to amend the city code, Chapter 68 Fees, Article 3, Miscellaneous Fees, Section 68 dash 15, enumeration of fees. This is simply the mechanism to allow for a fee for that public stormwater application to be tied into the system, issuance of the permit, and any questions, inspections that would go along with that, okay? So it goes with the previous uh motion, would someone like to make a motion on this?
Councillor Winnie will make a motion?
Please do, councillor Winnie.
Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020 dash 08, to amend the code of the city of Lebanon, Chapter 68 Fees, Article 3 Miscellaneous Fees, to implement a quote "stormwater permit application fee", close quote.
Thank you, we have a second on that?
Prentice seconds.
Councillor Prentice seconds, any further discussion? Councillor Prentice?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Sykes?
Yes.
Councillor Winnie?
Councillor Winnie votes aye.
Councillor Zook?
Yes.
Councillor Bronner?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Councillor Heistit?
Heistit votes aye.
Mayor McNamara votes yes, the motion passes. Okay, the last item of new business tonight is a presentation of the Solid Waste Business Plan by our city staff and their consultant, Weston and Sampson. So who are we going to have? Yeah, hold on just one second, I'm just going to pull it up so that I can share that with you, okay? Just a second here, but that's uh.
It's good to be here, this is Mark Morgan, Solid Waste Manager.
Thank you, Mark.
And um we do have Mike Richards, we're having some technical difficulties with the audio, um, but Mike is on the phone.
Yeah, can you hea, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Terrific.
So Mike and I are going to be uh tag teaming this presentation. So I'll let Mike take the, take the lead introducing this project.
Yeah, is, is it possible for me to share my screen of the presentation, or, or are you going to run it from there?
Uh, if you want to run it, I can just, I'll, I'll log on it and I'll let you do it.
I don't know if I'll, if I'll get the controls, or. Um, if I don't have the controls, um, there are some animations in there, if you could just, uh, just scroll right through them. I don't think, uh, I don't think it will go, um, without me having control, I don't think it'll be very smooth. So if you just go right through those animated, animations as they come up.
Okay.
All right? Well, well, thank you for having me, uh, again, my name's Mike Richard, I'm from Weston and Sampson. Uh, we've been working with Mark and the city to update uh the Solid Waste Business Plan, and I'm here tonight to provide an update on our findings. The next slide? Yeah, I, I don't have control there.
Okay, so um, given the, the current situation with COVID-19 and the fact that I have audience with, uh, with you folks, I just wanted to give an update as far as how uh the current pandemic situation has been impacting the Lebanon Solid Waste Division. So as many of you have experienced, as, you know, I know some of you do come to the facility, hours have not changed, um, however, the operation is, is a bit different. Uh, some staff are wearing masks who are in close proximity to the public. Uh, we do maintain uh the six-foot social distancing, we've put up signs, we've changed the scalehouse a little bit around as far as tickets uh for customers and signatures. Uh, punch cards are no longer punched, they're just witnessed, um, either making an X on a number or driving your pen or pencil uh through a number. So uh we're just making adjustments. The, the other thing that you might notice is at the recycling center, we've created six-foot boxes around the uh, the openings to the building to allow residents access and um to maintain that distance. Some of the other numbers that, that uh we've experienced is residential traffic is up. Uh, some of our community partners um have amended their own services, which has pushed some of their, their residents to Lebanon, which is fine. Uh, but it has, uh, many of you have, may have noticed that there's more people there more often. Um, our traffic count is up about 20%. Ticket sales for the first quarter 2020 have doubled when compared to uh first quarter 2019. Solid waste tonnage overall is down 10%, which makes a lot of sense, because Dartmouth College is closed, restaurants are closed, events are closed, you know, a lot of commercial activities have uh, have been suspended. Uh, recycling markets are all over the place. In the last two months, paper and cardboard prices have doubled, uh, because people want paper towels and toilet paper. And with uh municipal recycling programs being suspended across the country, um, demand is high and supply is low. So we're moving paper and cardboard very well. Um, unfortunately, the other commodities are struggling. Our um plastics market is in Pennsylvania, and currently the lockdown in Pennsylvania is impacting that particular manufacturing plant. But um our buyers are in touch with the governor there in Pennsylvania to see how we might be able to get our material um to that state. Staff are very prepared, uh, we have weekly meetings as policies change, uh, we work with them as it happens. Uh, we have adequate PPE, we have adequate hand sanitizer, um, the city is taking care of their people, and we have contingency plans in place in the event um of an illness. Uh, so far, staff have been healthy and um dealing with um all situations as they come up.
Okay, uh, next slide, please. Do I have control on the slides?
You do not, Sean's got that.
Okay, all right, I'll just, I'll just keep going, if we could just move to the next slide. Um, as I mentioned a few moments ago, uh, we have been working to provide an update to the, the business, uh, the Solid Waste Business Plan that was established in 2011. Um, the current plan has an engineered focus, uh, proposing to increase capacity through measures such as landfill expansion, uh, slope adjustments, and similar techniques. Um, our focus was on uh methods and techniques that uh, they're not engineered, uh, but they can still have an impact on capacity and operational uh decisions. Um, an alternative way of thinking about this is they, they're not as flashy, uh, but they still are proven, proven options to be effective uh at saving landfill capacity. Okay, if we can go to advanced, next slide? I'll just, I'll just keep going, I, I, I think we should be on slide five now, um.
Yeah, this one's on landfill capacity, and this can be a tricky one. I know it's been a topic that we've, uh, we've gone um around and around with over the years. It's difficult sometimes to nail down a number, um, currently permitted capacity. Now, uh, the city has a permit to operate the landfill, um, so it's with the state in New Hampshire. That permit allows us to landfill um for an additional nine years. Now, the permit doesn't specify time, it specifies volume. So that nine years is based on how much trash we take in, and then um annually we calculate a, it's called an air utilization uh factor, and that comes up to nine years. Now, the, the COVID-19 situation does add some of the complexity to this calculation. With 10% of our trash tonnage being down, that literally adds a year to the landfill capacity um here in Lebanon. So that nine years could become 10. Um, so, but as the region grows and businesses expand, and more waste is generated, that has a negative effect. So uh, we continue to work with and monitor uh planning and development throughout the region, and figure out how that impacts the landfill capacity. We're planning um currently. We're planning currently with our engineers, Sanborn Head, and we've met with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to talk about what we're calling Phase 3A. It is an eight-to-10 acre cell that's located just south of the current cell that's operating. That cell, again, is planned for nine years, but it's based on a volume. So the total remaining capacity that we have is 18 years. Some of the other things that we'll present this evening will show much longer years in the out years that we're currently planning on, but the 18 years is a much harder number that everybody feels good about.
And Mark, this is Tim McNamara. This does not include any mining of the existing unlined landfill?
That is correct. At this time, those are just two cells that are being planned. The next slide, Sean, if you want to advance to the next slide? Yep, this timeline shows the 2011 business plan takes us out to 2090, I think is the number I'm seeing on the screen. Sorry, it's small. The 2020 business plan takes us out another, I think it's 17 or 18 years. So the business plan on the top shows Phase 2C capacity, talks about some density modifications. That's training, which we did actually accomplish. We increased our density of waste. Phase 3 capacity that we were just talking about, that's the 2 million cubic yards. That's the additional airspace that I was talking about. Further to the right, you'll see reclaiming unlined areas. That's the 750,000 cubic yards. That's what you're referring to, Mayor McNamara. A slice to the right says Fill Valley. There's an area between the unlined landfill currently and the lined Phase 1, which creates a valley. That represents 650 cubic yards of waste. For a point of reference, we consume approximately between 65,000 and 75,000 cubic yards a year. So, but again, that's all depends on the current situation. The last slice on the timeline shows reinforced soil berms. So what reinforced soil berms are, are literally vertical walls around the landfill. We've identified a couple of corners that would be good candidates. They're called mechanically stabilized earth berms. They're used throughout, I shouldn't say throughout. There are a couple of landfills in New Hampshire that employ mechanically stabilized earth berms in landfills. The technology is the same as, like in the city of Concord, the Interstate 89 bridge that goes over portions of the streets in Concord. There's vertical bridge abutments. That's the same technology that's used in landfills to create these vertical walls and allow for additional capacity. Next slide, Sean?
Okay, so I'll start talking about the findings. As part of our review of operations, we took a look at the fee structure. Fees are accepted for all landfill materials, and most recyclable items are free. This is common in the industry. Fees are proven to have an impact on the life of the landfill. For instance, higher disposal fees have been shown to encourage recycling or incentivize people to look for other options. So when digging into the fee structure a little deeper, we found that the tip fee hadn't changed in 12 years. Next slide, please.
Before you go to the next slide, just to jump on to Mike's point about encouraging recycling and incentivizing people, I looked at the 2019 recycling data compared to the same period of time, 2020. When you look at some of that information, since we increased the fees, we've seen a 10% increase at our recycling center. Now, that was before the whole COVID-19 situation. So we can theorize that the increased fees are causing people to make choices associated with recycling. We're seeing it anecdotally at the scale house as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's certainly encouraging news. So we're talking about the tip fee, and then how it hasn't changed in 12 years. The tip fee is the fee that is paid generally per ton for material that comes over the scale and is landfilled. Subsequently, in 2019, the tip fee increased to $75 a ton. This is in line with the regional average. At the same time, the tip fee was adjusted. Disposal charges for construction and demolition debris also increased, almost doubled. This too is in line with the regional average. These changes, to Mark's point, have caused customers to more accurately assess the way that they separate their waste. And I think, you know, it might be too early now, but the results are certainly encouraging. With these changes that have already been made, we have no further price adjustments recommended. We have no further price adjustments recommended at this time. But this pricing should be continuously monitored, and the city should be prepared to adjust these fees as necessary with changing market conditions. Go to the next slide. We also evaluated the bag fee. The bag fee is different than the tip fee, but there is a direct correlation between the two of them. They both are buying the same airspace capacity. Bags, however, do require more labor and equipment to process the waste than the material that goes over the scale in a truck. The additional labor and equipment translates to approximately 50 cents a bag. The bag fee has recently been increased to $1.50 per bag, and this is in line with the tip fee plus those additional labor fees that we talked about. With this change, we have no further price adjustments recommended at this point in time. Next slide, please.
So managing a landfill is all about airspace. It's an invisible dome that sits over that landfill, and we place waste in there. Everything you put in there consumes that airspace. Approximately 20% of that airspace is consumed by daily cover. Daily cover is required by our permit and our operating plan. So at the end of every day, we place six inches of soil or some other material down to cover the waste. The purpose for that is to reduce litter, odors, vectors, and other unpleasant situations. The construction and demolition debris that we separate out and grind, we use as daily cover. So what we've done is we've identified a waste product that can serve as a daily cover. So although we're adding that as a daily cover, we've removed it from the waste mass. That improves our waste capacity at the landfill. Next slide?
Okay, so I'll continue with the daily cover from here. Currently, the facility uses material from revenue sources such as shredded C and D, urban fill, et cetera. And this is also good practice. If you're going to have to take up airspace, you may as well get paid for it. And good practice helps with managing airspace, such as what is being used and how it is applied. Let me go to the next slide, please. There are options for the facility to consider when it comes to daily cover, alternatives to preserving airspace. As airspace is the, it's the higher commodity. The alternatives would be used to augment current practices. These alternatives can be beneficial during the construction off-season or during economy downturns when the supply of C and D or construction demolition material may not be as readily available. One option for alternative daily cover is a tarp machine. In this practice, heavy-duty tarp's are deployed on the working face at the end of each day in lieu of applying the daily cover materials that we talked about previously. The next day, when business resumes, the tarp's are then rolled up. One drawback to this is that this practice can't be used every day. Strong winds is a good example of that. There's new technology out there that claims to be a little bit better, but generally, you'll find that you can't deploy these tarp's in times of strong wind. Spray products are also available, but they tend to be more time-consuming to deploy and have complications as well in many conditions. But they're also very difficult to deploy in cold weather. If I go to the next slide on equipment. As part of our study, we also reviewed the site equipment. The site uses a number of pieces of equipment from excavators to trucks, dump trucks, and a baler amongst many other different types of equipment. We go to the next slide, please. Review, we identified the following recommendations. Contract out the shredding of wood waste. This allows the shredder that the city currently...
Sean, could you move ahead two slides?
Here we go.
One more? Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Just so you know, there's a long lag with what I'm seeing on my screen. So I apologize for the technical difficulties. As I was saying, the city does already own a shredder, and we want to use it consistently with the trash at the working face of the landfill. If you're able to, if you contract out the services of shredding the wood waste, then that shredder that the city already owns can be dedicated to the working face of the landfill. Use of the shredder for trash increases waste density. It improves compaction and speeds up the production of landfill gas. This change has also already been implemented. Another recommendation was to replace the 10-wheel dump truck with an articulated off-road truck. This is certainly the more appropriate piece of equipment for the work that takes place there. This will improve operation efficiencies. Also, replace the excavator with a larger model that's more appropriate for its intended use. Evaluate lease options for equipment. Certain equipment will present better lease options. Continue to stay in front of new technologies such as bail fills and other waste conversion technologies. There's going to be a shortage in landfill space in the future, and I think you'll start seeing some of these other technologies become more appealing. Next slide, please.
So you're, stay right there, Sean. You're on the right slide. The site layout works well. I'm always amazed that we don't have too many hiccups with commercial and residential vehicles. People are pretty patient and know the flow and understand how things work there. Our residential recycling area is easily accessed by the public. It does help to encourage folks to recycle. There's a lot of confusion at our facility because each of our towns recycles a little bit different. So like right now, some of these new customers that are using our facility are unfamiliar with how we separate recyclables. Our recyclables are a market-ready commodity. So a lot of our buyers are mill-direct buyers. We're not going to a processor. So we're taking advantage of the highest value of that material as quickly as possible. The facility currently does receive some commercial recycling, primarily cardboard, from the plazas. It works, but it's a little tricky with the larger trucks. So we're looking at and considering site changes to better accommodate that. It's not likely to impact life for the landfill if we don't recycle it. That material will get recycled somewhere. It's just in markets like now, when the value is high, it allows us to take advantage of increased revenues. So going forward, we would look at evaluating the recycling center to determine the best way to increase diversion. Facility modifications might help with some production efficiencies, but that remains to be seen. Frankly, as this world changes and we have no idea where it's going, it could be a very different place in 18 months. Next slide?
Mark, wait a second. Clifton Belo here. Could you explain just a little bit about how you receive commercial cardboard, like the cardboard from the plazas now?
Sure.
I'm just curious to understand that.
Yep. So we get it from Kohl's Plaza, a Kohl's department store. They have a large roll-off behind their store just for cardboard. That container is picked up by Waste Management every other Thursday, and that container is delivered to our recycling center. They back in the side entrance and offload the material. And then our staff, we know it's coming on a particular day, so we prepare for it. And recently, we started taking in document destruction paper, so shredded paper, because their market has closed due to COVID-19. So we've started to receive high-grade office paper to mix in with our mixed paper, giving it a higher value. Again, they back in the side door and offload large loads. Upper Valley Stove, or Pellet Stove in Lebanon, they take their pellet bags and other pellet wrap that they generate at their store, load it into their large trucks. And again, it's all coming in that side door. So it's, sometimes it's timing, and it's just, you know, we try to, if somebody's coming in, we'll say, "Don't come in on Thursdays because we've got a load of cardboard coming in." So we just, we kind of by appointment only, as it were. So we do what we can to accommodate folks and to allow them to divert at, and we don't charge for that service to our commercial customers for large loads of recycling.
Okay, that helps. I was also wondering, under site layout, there's no mention in the whole report about the landfill gas to energy project? Because it's really sort of off-topic. But I presume the consultant was aware of it, and I'm just presuming that the citing for that as presently contemplated doesn't have any negative consequences for the future needs of the solid waste facility?
No, not at all. We've looked at the site as a whole. We'll get into some of those other pieces, but we are looking out 90 to 100 years in our planning as far as where the landfill will be. And all the structures that we're putting in, even the landfill gas to energy, should it need to be moved? It's all on a skid. It's flanged. So we could relocate it. It would require some site work, but the entire structure could be relocated if need be. If it, you know, disposal capacity was at such a high value that moving it made sense. So it's not completely fixed. It is a flexible option.
But for the foreseeable future, it looks fine?
Oh, completely fine. Completely fine. Yep.
Thanks.
For decades. So this one here, you know, again, we're going over the recycling center, and here you can see some of our orange boxes in front of the windows for social distancing. Last year, I was fortunate enough to participate in a neuroscience class at Dartmouth College where we did a sign study at our recycling center, and we worked with the students to figure out ways to best communicate with residents. So they've provided a number of recommendations to the site. We're just in the process of figuring out how does that translate into Lebanon's recycling center. So using that information, we will be modifying our signage at the recycling center, which should promote more recycling and make more clear the separation requirements at our facility. Next slide?
Okay. And I'll be talking about some of the additional recommendations and conclusions. Mark has actively been pursuing options for electronic payment system, and we recommend that this pursuit continue. This ties into one of our recommendations of collecting data of incoming materials. Data is good. Data helps us with future analysis and planning. This type of payment system also provides an added convenience to the customer. And fees may need to be adjusted to cover costs for additional systems implemented. These costs, if any, have not yet been recognized. We also... We also suggest review a pay as you throw bag system. This is similar to what is currently implemented now with the punch card system. However, in the bag system, pay as you throw bag system, patrons would purchase the bags in lieu of the punch cards. This is a very common practice in in the industry. We also suggest supplementing the facility's payment system to include accepting credit cards. This would increase convenience to the customer. And this also is a very common service in the solid waste. I'm sorry, at solid waste facilities. Next slide. We also ask that the the facility consider an indoor vehicle wash bay to preserve equipment, reduce maintenance costs and reduce equipment downtime. This also helps to improve stormwater compliance. And next slide. For staffing, consider replacing the seasonal position with a permanent position to avoid changeover and training, essentially using that position full time anyways. Also use the city mechanic to perform daily and routine maintenance. This would free up staff for facility related work. This is another recommendation that is our understanding is is already being implemented.
Clifton here. Again, I have a question about the wash bay. Is there any potential use for that for other city vehicles other than those at the solid waste facility? Does the city have anything else like that?
The the city does have a wash bay at the Public Works Highway Garage over on Dartmouth College Highway for their equipment. We are in the process of evaluating equipment washing options. That's what I'm going to call it. Not all of our equipment is easily placed inside a bay. So how do you wash a piece of equipment that usually stays on the landfill, like the trash compactor? So we're looking at at multiple options, you know. Right now, we've we're starting to employ a mobile equipment wash trailer to improve washing of equipment. We're just, we're trying to figure out how does it all fit into our current existing operation? So the equipment we're looking at, absolutely, you know, we're looking at, one piece of equipment we're looking at is a hydro seed machine. You can use it for hydro seeding. You can actually use it for equipment washing. You can use it elsewhere in the city. So absolutely, we're looking at multiple applications for one piece of equipment with the greatest amount of flexibility. So a wash bay works for most of our equipment, but not all of it. We have some very specialized equipment that a wash bay might not work, but it is on the Okay. You, this is, you got this one, Mike? Oh, no, I've got this one, the next one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I lost track. I apologize. So currently, the city of Lebanon does provide solid waste disposal services to 23 communities, including Lebanon. We have memorandums of understanding with these communities. Our solid waste permit is is what's called a limited service area. So our permit includes these communities. The permit has certain requirements, you know, that we have a memorandum of understanding. The contract or memorandum of understanding requires the community to report their waste diversion activities to the city. We're not always successful at getting that information. And to Mike's point earlier about data, we need to start using that data to push, you know, a greater understanding of of Lebanon. One item that we're looking at evaluating is something called a waste shed analysis. We look at the disposal and understand disposal practices because we operate the landfill. We don't know the recycling and waste diversion activities for the town of Canaan. We don't know how much Walmart recycles. We don't have a full grasp of the impact of willing hands on food scraps. So one thing that we'd like to look at is a waste characterization on incoming waste as well as having a better understanding of waste generation practices throughout our service area, not just the city of Lebanon. Very often, we forget that the landfill serves 90,000 people in the Upper Valley. It's not just Lebanon. So we need to look broader at our waste diversion opportunities. Next slide. We have, some of you may know, we have started a food scrap pilot project at the landfill, and we were going to have it end the end of March. We've extended it just through the the current COVID-19 situation. So the, I think I've got 15 households that are participating. We started with 30. Some of them had backyard compost bins, so they've kind of dropped off, but we're getting some good data from Lebanon residents. Households range from one to four, so we've got a good cross section of the population. Some of them are, you know, in apartments, others are homeowners, so it's a it's a good diverse group. As part of this, we're going to use the information gathered from this food scrap project to hopefully develop some waste diversion goals for our operation. I've been working or I had been working with the state legislature on the state's recycling rate. The state is taking a different approach and looking at waste diversion as opposed to recycling because you want to put less in the landfill, so that that would include reuse and waste reduction efforts. As Mike mentioned, we're looking to amend the facility payment system to allow better tracking of incoming materials. We are working on electronic payment system. And as was mentioned, we have looked at a lot of different options. How that will look has not been determined at this time. We're working with staff, city staff, you know, across the departments to figure out what is the best way to do that. We're in the process of evaluating and modifying our recycling area to improve recycling and to improve our marketability of material. We're we're looking at regional organics collection options. We do take food waste from Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center, Dartmouth College, and there's a hauler Nordic Waste who picks up food waste at the curb that is composted at our facility. So we're looking at that, at those options. We are looking at curbside collection for trash and recyclables. We start some preliminary data collection on that, talking with residents in Lebanon to find out what they're currently paying. I've been speaking with some contractors about what they would charge per stop. We're looking at the impacts of zero sort on the current market and how that impacts curbside collection costs. And we ongoing monitor landfill capacity for operational and procedural changes. As I mentioned, we do an annual air utilization factor to show just how well we're managing that airspace.
Hey, Mark, this is Tim McNamara. Regarding the curbside collection, I think that's something that the council will really want to get very engaged with as those discussions go on. You know, as you know, I'm pretty involved with recycling and curbside collection tends to be a zero sort sort of thing.
Yep.
And I would be concerned about us losing those recyclables to a zero sort program operated by an outside entity, so we lose those revenues. And as as you and I have discussed in the past, I am not a huge fan of the way zero sort is done right now. I don't really know how much of it actually gets recycled versus versus ending up getting landfills somewhere else. So or otherwise, just close those. So I think there's a lot of questions regarding the curbside collection that are, may not seem immediately applicable, but there's a lot of unintended consequences, aside from the financial aspects.
You couldn't be more right. One thing to consider as we go forward, too, is, you know, as we divert anything, the value of that cubic yard at the landfill is only getting more valuable. So that's something to consider. You're absolutely right about the impacts of zero sort. And the current world situation is showing just how frail that that zero sort system is. They're relying on global markets that are not available. They're relying on global transportation networks that are currently shut down. So domestic markets are the way to go. And absolutely, our evaluation of curbside collection of trash and recycling will include the council. It will include public participation because this is the first time the city has really taken this on, and we want to make sure we get this right. So absolutely, there will be public participation on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. As as we discussed, the the solid waste operation continues to provide excellent service in my mind. I'm biased. We have excellent staff. I'm impressed with them daily, especially during this. You know, I know we were talking earlier about city staff in the meeting. The solid waste guys go in every day. They are on the front lines as well, managing waste from the Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center as well as other frontline facilities. So we're we're backing that up as well as servicing more customers than ever. And the operation has changed considerably over the years due to regulations, customer requests, and managing capacity. Looking at how we manage equipment and how it's used is critical to the operation. So as Mike mentioned earlier, as far as right sizing or right modeling different pieces of equipment, it's critical as we ask our staff to do more and more tasks that they have the right tool, not just, well, this will work kind of tool. So we we consider equipment replacements very seriously when we're when we're doing that. Making contracted services available. We started that this year. We crushed asphalt, brick and concrete this year. The pile is massive, and it's going to save us considerable during mud season. Instead of purchasing crushed stone from Pike, we've used a waste product that somebody paid to drop off that we will now use on our muddy roads in the landfill. We're also grinding wood and and construction demolition debris using contracted services, and it's saving us a great deal of staff time.
Mark, we're trying to get you some more brick that you can grind up in the Westboro area. We're working on that, just so you know.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you very much. I think I appreciate that.
Well, Mark, thank you very much for all you do. As a weekly user of the landfill, I, you know, I can't say enough good things about the operations there.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Tim. One last thing I just want to get on everybody's radar is we are actually evaluating the potential of purchasing the adjacent property to the landfill. It does have an impact on landfill capacity. We are not looking at that property as additional landfill property. We're looking at it to move some of our structures in those year 80, you know, out way in the out years. Future Lebanon residents will benefit from these considerations, you know, moving part of our structures next door, allowing us to to structure more landfill space on the 370 Plainfield Road property. So we are in the process of evaluating that option. There's a lot to evaluate that option, but it is something that's on the radar. We continue to look at, as Mike mentioned earlier, waste conversion activities like bail fill, which is basically bailing trash. You literally double your densities. We're also looking at waste conversion technologies being used in in Maine and Nova Scotia. So there's a lot of new things out there that are that are pretty exciting, so we're keeping our finger on the pulse.
Counselors, any additional questions for Weston and Sampson or for our staff?
I have one minor question, Council Bilo here.
Yes, please.
On pages, on pages 132 and 33 of the report, there's a map of New Hampshire and Vermont that shows the member communities. And for some reason, Sutton's colored a different color, and I was just wondering if there's any significance to that or if somebody just picked a slightly different color, but it's the same as all the other towns that are members.
What page is that again, Cliff?
132 of the council packet.
Mike, do you have that before, in front of you?
Yeah, I I don't have that report in front of me, but we could take a look at and update it accordingly. I don't know why that would be a different color. It shouldn't be a different color, let's put it that way.
So Sutton's like all the other member towns.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, that's fine. That's that was my question. Yep.
We have, over the years, had towns drop out. Town of Grantham has opted out. They have been members for years but decided to take their trash elsewhere. And as you recall, Cornish did petition the city to bring trash to the landfill. However, they've decided not to to bring trash to the Lebanon landfill. Just an update to Cornish.
Oh, so does that mean they're they're not going to be a member community or they're
That is correct.
Okay, so they didn't execute the agreement.
That's right.
Okay.
Ealing Heasted here, Mark. Wanted to congratulate you on a very friendly, supportive and very congenial staff.
Well, I appreciate that.
And every time that I'm in and out of there, we leave being very happy with the interactions that we've had, and you should be congratulated on having a wonderful spirit at core in your your staff over there.
Well, I I appreciate that. Thank you all, and those guys down there, they get all the kudos. They are, they are doing a difficult job, and right now, it's a it's a very challenging time. As you can imagine, some customers are not as congenial as others. But yeah, staff are are working hard and they take their job seriously. They they take it very seriously, serving the citizens of Lebanon and our and our other communities.
It doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you. I'll let them know. I appreciate that.
Last item on our agenda, city manager reports. Do you have anything?
Oh, I have a few items, yes. So this is updates, 3 December off Main Street. Today was the last day of publications we were required to put in the newspaper as we have been unable to serve the present property owner. So we'll be filing court paperwork at the end of that grace period, which will be the 27th of this month. That'll be filed in the circuit court here in Lebanon to allow the corporate city to move forward so that we can have the 155 be established at that location. I just want to talk a little bit about the CARES Act, the most recent information we received this week, about $326,000, sees eligible for the CARES Act funds. That covers a variety of different issues, legal expenses, IT expenses, things that are not covered by the Stafford Act. The Stafford Act only pays 75%. This, these funds will pay 100%. So there are ancillary costs here and there that we would be able to receive reimbursement for. We will, we expect that we'll be using that full $326,000. There seems to be some indication that there are going to be some follow on amounts behind that that will go for the rest of the year, but that's less than clear. The guidance has been a bit rocky, shall we say. The announcement was put out about stipends for first line, first responders. They put the gun, they put the notice up that we're going to provide that, but they really didn't think through the process about how that was going to occur, which is creating quite, quite a lot of issues, shall we say, in how it's to be distributed. So we're working through that. The state's doing the best it can to think of the circumstances. Obviously, this is new to everybody, to try to push the money out as quickly as they can, but there are bumps in the road that go along with that. So that's pretty much that issue. Unless there's any questions about that. So remember, we got one main $60,000 for the landfill, I mean, for the airport, and then we have additional amounts in language I provided to you earlier that cover the capital expenses at the airport. We got $32,000 for Medicare reimbursement, and now we have this $326,000. Now, top of that, the stipends for eight weeks for first responders, police and fire personnel. And then, of course, we have the Stafford Act, which we don't know what that amount will be until we continue to move. We add to that every day, and that's 75%. So that's a fair amount of money that we receive thus far or are entitled to seek reimbursement for. So do you have any further questions on that? I'll move on if not. I'll move on if not. Okay, there have been a number of inquiries. I've received inquiries from several different councils, as well as citizens regarding internet service. The city does not have the authority to regulate internet service, only cable TV. We have a franchise agreement with Comcast to do that. That's the only thing that federal law allows us to regulate in terms of communication. However, we have, and there's an area, there's a number of areas in the city that don't have coverage. There are some of those areas that are covered by phone service, consolidated phone service. They have been telling their, their customers that they'd be glad to provide that service if the city provided assistance. It's not clear what that assistance is. I've tried numerous times to reach out to them. It's very difficult to figure out who we even talked to about that. I've made inquiries, and I'm still waiting for responses. Has not arrived yet. We're working on a plan to try to address that. A working group to address that, but I, I'm not very optimistic. This has been going on for years, not just in this state, but other states, with very little chance of success there. There was a proposal by the Democratic delegation in our legislature to use $40 million of CARES Act to expand infrastructure, internet infrastructure. We'll see what actually happens with that, if, if anything. But I want to make sure if that money has become available, we're in a position to take advantage of it. So that, I'm working on a planning department to get us in that particular spot. Moving on, unless there's any questions about that. One of the things that I've been working with Three Tomatoes and Salt Hill, they, the changes in the stay-at-home provisions that the governor has put into place, he calls it 2.0, allows for some relaxation of that, particularly for restaurants, as of the 18th of this month, can, can have outside seating. But they require a very large amount of space in which to do that, so that people can socially distance. So one of the things I have worked out with Salt Hill in particular is the parking area right in front of where the temporary city hall is, that's, that's owned by the city, would be to seal that off and allow that to be used for seating for Salt Hill. They'd be able to set up in that area to do that. They would need all of that area, as well as they have part of the mall, part of the mall that they normally use, to be able to have enough seats to make that work for them. I had a similar discussion with Three Tomatoes, and the only space we could do that, including some of the mall space they would be using, would be to use Court Street. So I'm proposing to close Court Street for the summer to allow for open-air seating area for him to be able to operate that. So there's a number of reasons why I am pursuing this. One is obviously for the businesses, and it's important to them for their livelihoods. Two is to keep this downtown lively. I don't want it to die, and I know you don't either. And then three, it's a simple matter, that people need to be able to go someplace, to go out to eat every once in a while, which they haven't done in months. And this would allow for an opportunity to do that, and do it, do it safely in accordance with the CDC guidance and the state guidelines. So in order to do that, that has to happen very quickly, so they can be up and running, not next week, but the week after, Monday, the 18th. I've talked to the bank, who would obviously be impacted with that, and they think it's an excellent idea, they don't have an issue with it. I talked to the owner of the property, that we are presently leasing space from. They think it's an excellent idea, because again, for all the reasons we just talked about, everybody seems to be in agreement that this is a good idea to do this. It will require you to authorize an extension of the area which those establishments can serve liquor. So what we're going to do is come before you next week, which is scheduled for a workshop, we're going to have to turn at least the first pilot into a meeting, allow you to vote on that, to authorize an expanded area to serve alcohol. So that's what I'm proposing. I'm meeting with DPW tomorrow. We may have to put Jersey barriers up temporarily, but I'd like to replace those with planters, something that looks halfway decent, so that it looks like an open-air market that they can see in other parts of the country. But of course, this is now happening everywhere across the country. I certainly didn't invent this idea. It's happening in Hanover and throughout our state and across the country. And it really gives these two businesses an opportunity to grow or survive, which is to not grow, and get through this. And they would, they would stay in that circumstance, assuming we all agree to do that, through probably mid-September. And they'd only be able to operate, obviously, if it's not raining out. But the sidewalks would be open, so people could traverse those. There'd be signage up, and so far, everybody seemed to be pretty positive about it. I did get a text from Councilor Zook, who would obviously be impacted by that, and she thinks it's a good idea as well, it was her business right there. So I was looking for some feedback on that. I had no choice, but if I, if I wait until tonight, it would be too late for us to move on this. So I needed to move on earlier and get the pieces in place, to get it ready to go, so that you could get, and make the final decision on this next week. Councilors, any input on this?
This, this is Karen Leo-Hill. I do have a comment, I guess.
Sure.
I think this is fantastic, and I guess I'm just curious about whether we should be extending similar accommodations to other restaurants in Lebanon. I know I've seen something about the Sun, the, is it the Sunrise Buffet? Or, you know, are there other restaurants in Lebanon that we should be thinking about as well?
The only thing is, it's obviously, we need to have a adjacent piece of public property that we can allow for use. Closing Court Street, obviously, there's ways to get around that, but some of the other streets may be more busy or not, not amenable to that. We do have a request from Lebanon Village Pizza to use public space there, where they're looking for some mall space. We're still working with them on that, but I'm sure we'll come to some conclusion. Obviously, we have construction going on there, but we're going to be working more closely with them to do something similar in our public spaces around their building.
So it would be cases where we have adjoining public property adjoining to a restaurant that would be of interest.
Right, they need to be able to, in this case, both of them can walk. They can open their door, walk across the sidewalk, and be right in their seating area. So yeah, it's going to be pretty limited as to where we can do that, but certainly, if we have those, any other place in the city would be willing to work with those folks to get there. I just don't know if any others are going to apply out of Lebanon Village Pizza.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Any concerns about this coming forward to us in our work session next week?
This is Councilor Zook. As, as the city manager mentioned, I sent him a text earlier saying I thought this was a really good idea. I, I think, yeah, I mean, that's really it. I just think it's a good idea. I think it'll bring a little bit of vibrancy. I don't know how much time anybody has spent downtown, but it's, it's looking a little, it could be more vibrant than it is at the moment. So I think giving, giving a couple of the downtown restaurants a chance to bring some people down here, and like, I know the owner of Three Tomatoes was talking about like stringing up some lights, and I am at, at the risk of, I'm going to knock on some wood as I say this, I'm preemptively a little sad that it may not happen in 2021, and also hoping that it won't be needing to happen in 2021. So, yeah, I just think it's, this is a really good idea, and it's going to be really helpful.
And I think it's an appropriate time, too, as perhaps the temperature might get above freezing for 48 hours in the near future. If we can solve this issue, I'll work on that one next. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Sykes.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is a great idea to try and get, you know, some additional space where outdoor seating would be properly spaced, so that people could feel comfortable about going to restaurants. I do have a question, though, about, has anyone talked to advanced transit? Will the closing of Court Street affect their operation at all?
It will. We'll have to move the bus to a different location, and they can also pour right up in front out there, but we'll be working with them on this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, councilors?
Yeah, I have a comment and want to join. Councilor Belo mentioned the sweeping that happened this year, and when Jim Donison led the bike fed committee back in January, he was asked if there was any way that the sweeping could be advanced, and he didn't know if it could be. However, clearly that he's advanced it a month, I think he deserves a kudo for being able to do that, making bicycling a lot safer on clean pavement rather than on the sand. So thank you to DPW, and congratulations, Jim.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, solid waste, one thing that Mark did not speak about tonight is the permit process. Right now, we have no way of knowing who actually stops in our landfill and drops trash off, with his no permit. It's the only place I've ever seen, it doesn't have a permit requirement. So we are working on a pilot project right now, the test-out electronic permit process. We're going to take a group of residents in our city, on a voluntary basis, and also Hanover. And while Hanover's going to be doing the work, logging into our system, approving their, their residents to have permits to be using our facility. If that works out well, we'll expand that to our, all the other communities involved and require a permit, and it'll also give us data about who's using our facilities. And then Mark did talk about, which is the phase two pieces of the electronic payment process, that, but also give us really good data about who's bringing what, and what circumstances, and from what communities. So that's the direction we're going. I wanted you to know about that, because we're going to be starting this pilot project probably within the next several months, and it'll take several months to go through that pilot. And if all goes well, we'll be coming before you to change the solid waste going in to add a permitting requirement in there. Assistant Mayor Belo brought up some concerns that residents brought in with water bills and sprinkler system issues, because they have a larger meter size, they pay a higher amount. Of course, this is the full, with the change that we made in the structure, this, the first water bills came out, and these folks are realizing that now. So we're, we're going through the process of analyzing all of that, and we're making some recommendations on that. But one of the things we could do is, once we get that done, if the council were to abate those six property owners that have that circumstance, and there's another 44 that have a slightly different circumstance, I have the ability to do that, you can direct me to do that, and that's what we would do. So if you get those inquiries, we can address that. Even though people are paying the bills right now, we can put a credit to their account, without getting into all the details of that, because that would take some time. Yes, Councilor Sykes.
Yeah, I just would point out to the city manager and others of the council that, back in the day when we had a residential sprinkler ordinance, one of the parts of that ordinance exempted single-family homes for higher water fees, just because they had a sprinkler system. Because obviously, when you're trying, when we were trying to do that, we wanted to make it as cost-effective as possible. So maybe go back and look at the old language on that. Might give you some thoughts, too.
The only thing with that is, right now, there's no water usage, so they're not paying the, once you track the system, unless there's, of course, a fire, or you're testing it, there is no water usage. So that isn't the problem, it's the meter size issue, and those folks have to...
I understand that, and, but the fee associated with the size of the water line going in and the meter attended to, where there was an exemption or a different rate, I can't quite remember, for residential sprinkler systems.
Thank you.
George, do you remember when that dated back to?
Yeah, let me think about this for a minute. It was still in effect in 2007, I can tell you that. When it got passed, I don't remember.
George, was it when you were still deputy fire chief?
That's correct. I think it was 2011 or '12 when the ordinance was adjusted or repealed, I'm not exactly sure. But prior, but I, but the original ordinance, I believe, was passed somewheres around 2005, thereabouts.
That's my recollection as well, because I believe I was present when it was, when it was passed, and you were deputy fire chief. And so I think it was 2005 or 2006.
Yep.
Thank you. And that's all that I have. That's all. Okay, having said that, I will entertain a motion, and I think Council Bronner's hand is up.
Move adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Hey.
Council Heistit, seconds. Okay, motion to adjourn. Council Prentice. Council Prentice.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute and all, but yes.
Uh, Council Hill.
Yes.
Council Sykes.
Yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook.
Yes.
Council Bronner.
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Yes.
Council Heistit.
Yes.
And Mayor McNamara makes it nine. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for a long but productive evening. We will see you next week.